Good afternoon, Ms. Cruz. How are you today?
Good, how are you?
Great, thank you. I think what we'll do is go down the deal and introduce ourselves and start with Councilmember Feraldi.
I'm Chris Feraldi. I represent Ward 4.
Hello, I'm Sterling Wilder, Ward 2.
Hi, Roxy Bowden, right at large.
Mary Jane Dolan, Ward 1.
Jeff Helgeson, Ward 3, and I've been to your house campaigning.
Trinae Tweedy, at large.
Randy Nelson, at large.
Hi.
Hello.
Okay, so we're each going to have some questions for you, and I'm going to start down at my left, Councilmember Nelson.
Well, good afternoon, and thank you for your interest and your application to serve on the school board. It's a large task, and at times it's somewhat difficult. When city council seeks LCS board members, we seek persons who demonstrate critical thinking, analysis, inquiry, and the ability to hold the school administration accountable for what it is that they propose or recommend. Do you agree that those are appropriate qualifications and standards for a Lynchburg City School Board member?
Will you name them all again?
Generally speaking, someone who demonstrates critical thinking,
Analysis.
Somewhat deep analysis, the willingness to inquire into causes and reasons for taking positions, so as to not just rubber stamp whatever it is
Right.
that the administration may do.
Yes.
You do agree that's important?
I think that those are appropriate qualifications, absolutely.
And do you think that you have those qualifications?
I think I do. I think being a mom to two sons and having to break up as many fights as I do every day and figure out how to solve things peacefully between the two of them is a lot of critical thinking on an hourly basis sometimes. I think within the job world, I've had to exemplify that in nonprofit work especially, where you always have to be the best steward with the resources that you're getting and making sure that you're doing the best for your community that you can do with what you have. And I think a lot of that depends on especially the board of a nonprofit, and so I've seen how that plays out, and I think that it takes a lot of teamwork just to make sure that everybody is on the same page and communicating well.
When school administrators present themselves to you, if you are a school board member, with lots of degrees and titles and qualifications, what is it about you that you think you could hold them to task and require justification and demonstration of the legitimacy of the proposals they're making or the requests they're presenting?
So, earlier in my career, I worked with a lot of celebrities, actually, and I'm not someone that's necessarily impressed or intimidated by a lot of credentials, and so I don't mind putting people in their place when I feel like they need to be put in their place. But I think that honey attracts more flies than vinegar, and I always try to be as kind as possible in doing that.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Tweedy?
Thank you. Ms. Cruz, how do you feel about the curriculums that teach the history of our country, particularly your viewpoint on the false narrative of CRT being a curriculum in the school system? And what is your opinion of that?
So, I think that this is a super-hot topic right now especially. I don't understand why a lot of people seem to be making a big deal of something that's not in our schools right now, but that would probably help to be in our schools. I think that it's important that we recognize history for what it is and look at the facts in any situation and in any classroom, and I don't think that it's something that we should shy away from necessarily, because I've seen what it can do in a freedom school setting for kids to understand why things are the way that they are now and the people that helped to be able to get us to where we are.
Thank you.
Councilmember Helgeson?
Maybe later we'll follow up on that, but right now, I guess, let's talk about staffing ratios. Lynchburg City Schools is the third highest-staffed division in the entire state. With that, there's obviously ways that money can be divided. You can have 10 people, pay each of them $10 if you had $100, or you could divide your $100 over four people and pay them a whole lot more, paying them each $25. Staffing ratios in Lynchburg have been high for a long time.
Right.
With that being the case, we keep hearing, "Well, they're underpaid," or this or that. The school board had it under their power for years to address this. Lots of times, the city bureaucrats, I think Councilmember Nelson alluded to that, lots of times the bureaucrats, the administrators, they kind of have lots of the information, and they give you selectively what they want you to hear. How can you look objectively at the facts that they give you, and what would you do different than just, you know, rubber stamping what they give you?
I think there are a lot of layers to that question, but I know that my values are in making sure that teachers are paid their worth. I personally went through that with my husband and seeing the burnout that he went through in teaching the last couple of years, and he loved teaching and still ended up having to leave once I got a job that paid more than what he was making. It just made sense for us, for him to stay home with the kids. I do understand that we want to be frugal and that we want to use our resources as well as we can, and I think that there are a lot of pieces to that puzzle that I don't necessarily have right now. But I think that what we're doing as far as being able to talk to administrators and being able to talk to the community and the parents is going to help in being able to make those decisions in the future.
So, how would you, how could you stand up to them differently?
I don't know exactly what you mean by standing up to them differently.
Well, I mean, if somebody keeps pushing something for years, and that says, "Hey, we're out of money." For example, if we staffed just the state average, we could have saved $8 million, which means we could have given back $4 million to the taxpayers and given $4 million to raises for teachers for lots of years. And with that, though, those solutions never come out, because lots of times you have an administration that is pushing an issue. It's incumbent upon the school board members to say, "I don't know about this. How about if we kind of pull other data, like look at what state average staffing ratios are, or look at what other funding formulas are, and maybe ask those tough questions?"
I think that it takes more communication with people and making people feel like their opinion in that is valued, like legitimately valued, versus just making a suggestion and hoping that they'll agree with that. So, I think, like, what I'm saying is I would be able to stand up differently in a way of making sure that people are feeling connected to the conversation versus just saying, "This is the decision that's being made," or "This is why we've made this decision." I think once people understand all of the parts, that you're never going to please everyone, but a lot more people are usually willing to go with you if they feel like they have all the pieces.
And if we could just follow up on that, you had mentioned that you think that teaching CRT in Lynchburg City Schools would be a good thing. Why do you think that would be a good thing?
I think that we are actually missing a lot of the historical curriculum that is necessary for a lot of our students to understand what their history is and why there are systemic problems today.
Thank you. So, tell me a little bit about your vision for the next five to 10 years for our school system.
Oh, wow. I think in a perfect world, I, to be completely honest, would throw out standardized testing. I just don't think that the research is there to validate why we're sinking what we're sinking into it. I know that that is probably not an option, however, and so I think that there are ways for teachers and the school system to be able to start focusing more on teaching to learn versus teaching to test, and that's one of the things that's really important to me.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you for coming.
Hi.
So, you mentioned teacher pay a moment ago as being an issue of significance to you. Setting that issue, particular issue aside, and the recognizing, of course, it is a significant one, and personally agreeing with you on that, can you tell me about an issue with LCS that particularly concerns you?
I think the facility study right now, absolutely. That's something that, as a parent, is scary for me, but I also think that that's something that I'm able to sit in a room and take in the facts and be able to make an unbiased decision on. I want what's best for the community and not necessarily just my own two kids, and I feel like there are a lot of emotions and nostalgia, especially even for me personally, on like the schools that I went to. And so, yeah, the facility study is probably another thing that's high on my list right now.
So, if it's recommended, and it certainly seems like it will be, that we consolidate schools, the school board, of course, will be sort of in the middle of having that conversation with the community. Can you speak a little bit to how you would interact, you know, would advocating for this change in front of the community, how would you do that?
So, in marketing, I'm used to being able to reach out through emails and social media. I think that that is one thing that allows me to be able to connect more easily with the community than what I've seen from a lot of school board members currently. I am very involved in the community, and everybody kind of knows where I stand on things, because I'm not afraid to be vocal about it. And I think, as well, being able to have lunches and talk to people who are maybe kind of flip-flopping or don't really understand what's happening or why it's happening. I think that there's a lot to be said for breaking bread with people and sitting down and hearing what they need to say and helping them to feel validated.
Thank you.
Yes, again, thank you for coming in and volunteering your service. We really appreciate that. Thank you so much. Could you articulate your understanding of the role of a school board member? And given the current climate where some person, their main objective is to degrade public education or to find data to discredit the school system. So, as a school board member, can you define what is the role?
Well, so I've heard it's very difficult, and a lot of ours. I think that my role as a school board member is to advocate for what's best for students, what's best for teachers, and what's best for the students that are going to become the leaders of our community later on. That's pretty much it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Roxy, thank you for being here today. I just am curious, because we haven't met number five or two. I engage with some of my colleagues. I assume you've met them. Where did you come from, if you're comfortable sharing that?
So, I was always the only errand in all of my classes, and then I got into ninth grade, and there were five errands in my class. And so, I wore Roxy t-shirts.
Gotcha.
And that's where it came from.
Simple enough, thank you.
Yes.
I'm going to be candid with you. I could not disagree more with your analysis of the critical race theory and potential implementation of it in our school system, but I do fundamentally have great interest in your statement about SOLs and standardized testing. I think that's an interesting, I don't know what the proper word is, but it's an interesting makeup right there.
Right.
What would you say we currently are doing better in Lynchburg City Schools, education or schooling?
I would say schooling. I feel like we are teaching to test right now, instead of educating our scholars on pertinent things that they need to know in life. I think that there are things that are starting to kind of come down the pipeline, like financial stability courses, and I know that Dunbar now has kind of a home ec, it's not called that, but kind of a home ec class again. And so, I think that there are things like that. To me, that's education, to be able to say, "Here are life skills that you can have," and not necessarily teaching a student that you have to keep testing and testing to get into college and then keep testing and testing. So, yeah, I would say schooling right now.
Which one should we, so you would say we should be educating more than schooling?
Yes.
How does that then relate to your application of what we just spoke about, which was the CRT, whatever you want to call it? The basis I would use, take the race out of it, take every aspect outside of, we're instructing you, "This is how you should think," rather than, "This is how you critically think and make your own conclusion."
Well, I don't think you can take race out of life.
Forgive me, I'm taking it out of the CRT, out of the equation, and just saying, from a fundamental standpoint, we're teaching you to think or how to think. Apply it to any theory.
Teaching to think, yes.
Yeah. So, you would rather us teach what to think or how to think?
How to think.
Okay. So, then putting CRT back on, and how does that align with your position on that policy in theory?
I think you need all the facts to be able to come up with an intelligent opinion, and I don't think that if you're, I think that if you're not getting all the facts, then you don't really know how to think. You're just being told what to think without the facts.
Final question on this point, then. Would you agree that CRT promotes instructing students what to think they are?
No, not at all.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a quick follow-up to the question about CRT. You said that you think that that would be beneficial to be adopted by the schools. At what grade level would it be appropriate?
So, in freedom school, we actually start talking about what a lot of people would consider critical race theory in kindergarten. I think that what a lot of people think is critical race theory is actually not something that is being taught until college, and so it's not really an issue in our city schools. But I do think that there are ways to be able to show representation and to be able to teach kids actual history that's age-appropriate, no matter what age they are.
Okay, thank you. My question is corollary to my first question, and that is, for many years, the Lynchburg City School Board has repeatedly approved the administration's policies, procedures, budgetary recommendations, without any real inquiry or questioning. And in recent years, this has resulted in some fairly ineffective outcomes. There has been a chronic exodus of highly qualified teachers and administrators. There have been extensive declines in the enrollment of students in our public schools. There have been some material disconnects between teachers and their students, and teachers and administrations, and the students' families.
Absolutely.
And it also has resulted in some fairly inflated budgets and financial deficiencies. If you were a member of the school board, what would you do to hold the administration accountable to ensure that LCS might deliver the promises and policies ingrained in their mission statement, "Every child, by name and by need, to graduation"?
I think that asking questions is actually one of the most important things to do. I think that it bothers me that you're saying that they're just not doing that, and they're kind of putting the rubber stamp on whatever's coming up. I believe that being able to sit down and talk about values is always really the starting kind of goalpost of where we're trying to get, and being able to come up with strategic plans to get there is important. I don't know what I would do differently than what's being done now, other than making sure that I'm getting my facts straight before I'm just saying yes to something blindly.
So, you would demand higher demonstration of the underlying substantive data and materials?
Yes. I think being able to see a lot of analysis and research. I really like audits, and I like charts, because I like to be able to see exactly what someone's saying versus just trusting what they're telling me.
Okay, thank you.
You mentioned the issue of facility studies and being concerning as a parent. What is your personal engagement in all the neighborhoods throughout the city served by LCS, and understanding of the family dynamics of the school division, as well as your concept of the, a school system being selective in the students it can enroll versus an open-door policy of who shows up at the door to be enrolled?
And how do you serve students?
So, I want to make sure I understand the second part of your question. So, you're asking, "What do I know about the families in the communities," right? And then, "What's my opinion on being able to pick students rather than just open-door policy?"
Open-door policy.
Okay. So, I, oof, I am all over the community. I think you know that. And so, I have a lot of interactions with all different tax brackets and all different types of families. And I feel like, growing up in, I'm trying to think, kind of on the outskirts of Forest, but in Lynchburg, and being bussed in to Payne, to be able to go to Go Center, I grew up seeing the Go Center side of RS Payne. Now, working in the schools every once in a while, I see the difference in how children are treated if they are being bussed in versus if they are one of the children that's just walking through the doors, and that bothers me. And so, I think with my value of having equity and support in all the school system to be able to really, like, empower all of our scholars, that it takes equity being a full-force vision with the school board and not just making decisions the way that they've always been made, because that's what we've always done in Lynchburg. Does that answer your question? Mm-hmm. Okay.
Councilmember Helgeson?
Thank you. You had mentioned earlier, to Vice Mayor, right, that you thought the facility study was scary, and it's very emotional. You know, you grew up in the school system, as you stated. When we look at just the last two decades, we've lost about 2,000 kids. So, the enrollment has declined almost that amount, about 100 a year on average. With that being the case, and you don't live far from me, when we look at a map, there are nine elementary schools within walking distance of our house. And so, why would that be scary? Or why would it be, I can understand maybe other parts of the city that don't have so many schools that are close by. What's the scary part, or what's the emotional part, or help further clarify?
Yeah, I'll clarify that. So, I'm really into historic buildings, and so, for me, the nostalgia and the sentimentality of the schools that I went to and the school buildings that I've seen growing up, to lose those possibly is personally scary. I do think that consolidation is probably a very good idea, and it's probably the way that we're heading, no matter what. But, yeah, I was just saying, like, personally for me. And then, the fact that, like, TC Miller is such a small school, and I really appreciate that for my children, because I believe I learned better in a classroom that had less kids. I like the community there, and I would hate to see that dissolved, because we're all moving into one big building.
And so, with it, it doesn't, you know, I know the school, some of the architects who have a vested interest in designing and building more schools, typically, when you have a lot less students and lots of buildings, my first thought isn't building a brand-new building, but is consolidating the current ones that we have.
Right.
Would that be agreeable, or is that not agreeable?
I think that there are pros and cons to all of it, and I think that these facilities discussions that are happening around the community are an amazing idea. I'd really, I'd rather give an opinion statement on that after all of that research comes back, but...
But you kind of were alluding to the fact that, you know, you appreciate the nostalgia and the history of these buildings, so don't close them, but by the same token, on the second breath, is to build a brand-new building.
Right. I see it both ways. So, what I'm saying is my mind is not made up one way or the other. I would really want to sit down and have conversations with a lot of different people.
Could you talk a little bit about your experience in budget and finance?
Absolutely. So, I have pretty much been a stay-at-home mom for the last six years, and so I ran my own businesses while doing that from home. And so, I had to do all my own budgets and really dive into that on a personal level for the first time. Before that, when I lived in Tampa, I was, sorry, may I have a drink really quick? My mouth is getting very dry.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Everybody take a drink break. When I lived in Tampa, I worked for veteran athletes and current athletes of the Tampa Bay Buccaneers and the coaching staff, and so a lot of times I was tasked with event budgets for them. Obviously, school board, I looked at that budget, and it is the thickest budget packet I have ever seen in my life, but it would be a challenge for me, but I think I'm up for it. I appreciate being able to look through numbers and try to understand and ask a lot of questions about exactly what everything is going towards. And a lot of, a lot of my more recent stuff has been with the nonprofits, so being able to look through all of that. United Way has a pretty hefty budget as well, and that is something I've recently been diving into.
Great, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thanks. How much emphasis should the schools place on the arts and athletics in the schools? How much support, and I'm not necessarily talking about in dollars terms, but real sort of consistent energy should be applied towards making those types of programs available?
Oh, absolutely. I think that you don't have a safe place for kids without having the arts or any kind of athletic outlet. I think that that is, one, already shown to empower kids. It is shown to be able to teach them better communication skills or better ways to cope with their feelings. And I think that, especially in a, what I would call post, almost post-COVID world, that giving kids more outlet to be able to learn how to deal with depression or learn mindfulness skills is never, ever, ever a bad thing.
Okay, thanks.
Mm-hmm.
Again, thank you for coming. We really appreciate it. As another question, considering Lynchburg, our region has one of the highest poverty rates in the region, over 20%, 150% of our children in homes are by single families. What role does that play in educating our children as a board member? How will you address that?
Honestly, I think that the biggest way that that impacts us Honestly, I think that the biggest way that that impacts us is parent involvement. I think that especially when you're talking about single parents or parents that might not have transportation just kind of at their leisure, that those are the parents that start to feel the least connected from the school system and the least connected from the teachers and their child's education. So I think being able to make small changes here and there where it's more equitable for parents to be involved in things is a huge step. And I saw that with the facilities conversations, that childcare was offered at one of them recently. And to me, that was really important because there are times even as a married parent that if my husband is off doing something and I go, oh, I really want to be involved in this conversation, it's not always possible if I have my two kids. And so to be able to go to something where that's already taken care of is a big step. I think transportation to these things would also be really awesome.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Fralby?
A couple of years ago, Richmond passed legislation that empowered localities and school divisions to enter into collective bargaining with their employees, otherwise known as unions. For council, it would be for police department, fire, EMS, trash, public works, and so on. And then the legislation specifically carved out school divisions and school boards to make their own decision on the matter, as technically they are a separate body and entity. If you were appointed to the school board, would you support or oppose a proposal for collective bargaining with LCS employees?
I think that when you have employees that feel like their opinion is valued and feel like their voice is heard, that they're already feeling better about the job that they chose. And I think that an important part of any work culture is feeling like you are safe in that job. I think that any kind of collective bargaining for school support staff or teachers is absolutely something that's on the table. And I think that even just giving them that option is, it could really change a lot of things. I know that when my husband was going through a lot of what he was going through with the school and I kept saying like, well, who is there to like stick up for you? And he kept saying, nobody, there's, I have to do this on my own. And I don't think that anyone should ever have to feel like that as a teacher or as a bus driver. I think that people should be able to say, no, I have this group of people that are willing to stand up with me.
I have a couple of questions on this point and I'll be brief with them. So in that instance, would you say the school board has been successful in advocating for teachers?
I would say that they have tried and are probably currently missing the mark.
On that front then, if you're on the school board and you've entered into collective bargaining, you're now in a position where the school board is agreeing to a proposal from the union and then is coming back to this city council, which may or may not agree with said proposal. In that instance, the legislative body of, for appropriating power of tax dollars is openly rejecting a proposal and you as a school board entered into that agreement. What legal potential or other opportunities for damages might be associated with that? Do you have any insights into that at all?
I have no insight on that.
How would you as a school board member entertain that discussion with council, seeing as we are the appropriating power of those tax dollars?
I think being able to share the stories of people that are struggling, as well as being able to back that up with the research and any kind of numbers. I think that there is a way to be able to work with numbers to make sure that people are being taken care of.
I believe we have extra time, I might come back to this, thank you.
Okay. Let's see, we have 11 minutes. 11 minutes. Unless anybody else has any burning questions we would like to ask you, Ms. Cruz, if you have any questions for us.
I would like to know from each of you what you think, I know that you don't all know me personally, some of you are just kind of meeting me for the first time, but I would like to think that from what you've seen of me today, what you think my biggest struggle with school board would be?
Councilmember Fralby is volunteering to go first.
May I ask it in the question?
You may, I don't know if I'll have an answer.
And I'll share my position with, so let's pretend I'm a parent who has a completely contrary position to almost every question that Councilmember Fralby has asked you. CRT or any facsimile of it should not be in Lynchburg City Schools. The legislative body should have the entire and full right to entertain proposals for the school division and not some third-party group who is advocating for teachers and workers. We should not be talking about, you know, building a new school, we should be talking about consolidation. Insert item here that has been discussed and I'm completely opposed to. How would you then engage with that parent?
I think that there's always common ground somewhere and I'm a person that likes to find that common ground before I enter into any discussion normally. Because I think when you start with that common ground, it's much easier for people to see the reason why someone else has an opposing viewpoint. I don't know that there's ever going to be a time where I feel like every parent agrees with the decision that I'm saying I stand for. But I do think that if anyone asks, I'm able to pretty well articulate why I believe this and why I made the decision, while also respecting their own viewpoints.
Did I answer your question? I want to make sure of that.
You think I will struggle with parents who disagree with me, is that it?
I think you would struggle with a city that is very, very cut down the middle, 49-51 either way on any issue.
I, but I also grew up in this community and I've dealt with that my whole life.
What was your question again, I'm sorry?
What do you think I would struggle with most as a school board member?
Oh boy, what are you, oh goodness. I think the challenge is, it's such a diverse community with so many challenges as far as so many different opinions right now. And just trying to navigate that, that's why you're, I think you're in communication, so just trying to navigate that and make sure the message is out there. Because there's so much misinformation, I think it's so important to accentuate the positive. You hear so much negative. I think we as citizens and especially as representatives need to accentuate the positives and continue to make change and see how we can make our community better, our school system better, but give me resources, give me solutions. So trying to be the advocate to get solutions. You have an opinion, what are your solutions? What are you bringing to the table? So I guess be like a negotiator and bringing things to the table to make your situation, your school system a better place for everybody. Thank you.
That helps, thank you.
Should I just go down the line then? I'd echo what Councilwoman Wilder said. I think, to me, the challenge or the struggle that you might have is I think one that most, any board member will have or anybody who serves on city council will have, which is like understanding the deep nuance of public education, the volume of information that you have to be able to absorb and retain, especially with respect to the budget, which is very confusing, to put it mildly. And so being, go ahead.
I believe I called it thicker than a snicker, but.
Yeah, right. So it's pretty, it's pretty complex and I think being able to absorb all that, synthesize it, and then be able to digest it, derive your own conclusions, and then communicate those is the challenge, I think, just of leadership in general.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
I don't like your question. Because I'm like on the positive side, so I'm positively, you're a very nice person. But I would agree pretty much with what Vice Mayor Wright said and Dr. Wilder. I think understanding the budget is huge. I think also you have to have the wherewithal to do more than rubber-stamped decisions that have been made. I mean, you have to really be able to fight for and state a position and be able to articulate it and be able to make a difference in terms of people going along with you and listening to you as you move forward with those decisions. That would be mine.
I guess what, all I could go on is, you know, you're the director of marketing and communications. So with that, lots of times when people think about the problem is in communicating, right? And I kind of think that's what you alluded to a little bit ago. Some of these issues aren't about communication. I think people are pretty clear that they do not want CRT talked to a kindergartner. So, and probably isn't a good idea. So with that being the case, I don't know if it's just the fine-tuning of a message, but it's the reality of saying, this probably isn't the, you know, that kind of issue needs to have a very diametrically differentiating view that says, well, and we have to really, the perspective, you know, and I know you appreciate TC Miller because it's right down there, great school. Were you there as a child as well?
No, no, just my son's.
Just your child, great school, fabulous. And so to be able to separate from our personal wishes versus the wishes and the good of the whole community, which gets to be difficult, so.
Thank you.
I don't think you would have that much of a problem. Everyone goes on the school board with minimal knowledge. Let's just say that.
Well, that makes me feel better.
Because no one sits and studies the budget, no one sits and studies the SOQs versus non-SOQ positions. I mean, if you do, I kind of question your time, but how you spend it. But I think it's just the requirements and mandates versus the personal things people want to see changed. So in other words, you have special education students, you have to do certain things for those students. There is no gray line in this area, you know? And so understanding that there are minimal things you can change when it comes down to student individual performance versus the funding of that and how those fundings blend to create the school system that we know. And so when you're making changes, it is listening, but it is also understanding mandated versus opinion versus ideology and it's delivering the product for the students that you serve.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I guess I have a general answer. First of all, I'll say that you have some very definite assets. You were a student in the Lynchburg City School, Public School Division. You do know the needs of this community, particularly by virtue of your work with United Way. And there's some significant needs that we have. And they of course translate and transcend into the school division on a daily basis and into the classroom and the hallways. You have marketing experience, which gives you perceptions as to how to deliver your message and relate to your audience. And then, of course, as you pointed out a couple of times, you have budgeting experience, not on the level that the school division would have. But it's not an unknown landscape to you. So I think that those are good assets that you go into. I think, as was alluded to by the Vice Mayor, there are a multitude of policies, procedures, regulations, laws, and then the technology of the profession that is foreign to anybody who has not been well-educated and keenly aware of the background of education and instruction. And those are going to be some challenges to learn. The biggest challenge, I think therefore, is that you will need to arm yourself with fairly intense knowledge of all of those concepts, terminologies, technologies, in order to have the fortitude to stand up and question decisions of the administration and not simply drink the Kool-Aid and go along because it takes a lot of work to ask the deep questions and undergo the analysis that's required to be the one who's questioning everybody else who is saying, this is the way Richmond wants us to do it, this is the way the profession tells us we need to do it, these are what the standards say we have to have. It's a lot of work and it requires a lot of courage. And that to me will be the thing that will be most challenging.
Thank you.
If that makes sense.
Mm-hmm. Okay, we're at 2:44. We have one minute left. Okay, if anybody has anything else. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that it?
Thank you very much.
May I just say that was much less scary than everyone told me it was going to be.